Call to order. Fled allegiance.
Fled allegiance. The United States of America, the two republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every duty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the July 13th, 2017 Hills Road Township Planning Board meeting. This meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975 Sunshine Law. Roll call, please.
Mr. Weinstein.
Here.
Mr. Scoville.
Here.
Mr. Heschag.
Here.
Mr. Julian.
Here.
Chairman Delcor.
Here.
Chairman Luthani.
Here. Thank you. Our first sort of business, we have the deposition of minutes in your packet dated June 8th of 2017.
Eligible members, Mr. Chairman, Arm, Julian, yourself, Heschag, Mr. Scoville.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Thank you, Mr. Scoville. Second. Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
Mr. Scoville.
Yes.
Heschag.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Julian.
Yes.
Chairman Luthani.
Yes. All right. We have a couple of resolutions to go through here. The first one would be Montgomery Development LLC File 05 PV-19SR. This was a request for an extension in your packet.
Eligible members, the Chair, the Vice Chair, Heschag, Mr. Scoville.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Scoville. Roll call.
Mr. Scoville?
Yes.
Heschag.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Julian?
Yes.
Chairman Luthani.
Yes. Second will be John Zapkotowicz, File 07 PV-26MJ. This was also a 2000 extension request in your packet.
Same group, other than Mr. Weinstein, Julian, and Mr. Scott.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Scoville. And we'll take a roll call.
Mr. Weinstein?
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mr. Scoville?
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Julian?
Yes.
Chairman Luthani.
Yes. Third one would be the Terrace Industrial Park, File 08 PB-08 MJF. Again, a request for extension, 2017.
Uh, the Chair, the Vice Chair, the Secretary, and Mr. Scoville.
I'll make a motion to approve that one.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Scoville. And roll call.
Mr. Scoville?
Yes.
Heschag?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Julian?
Yes.
Chairman Luthani.
Yes. And last one would be WSH Enterprises Incorporated, File 08 PB-15 MJF. Also a request for extension of 2017.
The Chair, the Vice Chair, the Port Secretary, and Mr. Scoville.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Thank you. And roll call.
Scoville?
Yes.
Heschag?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Julian?
Yes.
Chairman Luthani.
Yes.
Planning Board business, there is none. Special committee reports, there are none. Any business on the floor other than what's on tonight's agenda? The mic is weak. We'll take a technical difficulty. Maybe we can take the one from on that side?
Take two minutes.
Take two minutes. And we're back. We fixed our mic for our counselor, and we are now at the business on the floor this night, not on tonight's agenda. There is not. We'll move on. So we have consideration of ordinances. So we have none, I believe, right?
Correct.
And so now it brings us to our first public hearing. 284 Sunnymead LLC, File 17 PB-05 INF, Block 183, 35.01 Sunnymead Road. Acknowledged is requesting informal review of a preliminary and final major site plan application to construct a 92,280 square foot, single-story warehouse to the, to include 6,000 square feet of office space, 23 parking spaces, 16 loading bays, two onsite detention basins, and improvements on the property in the I-1 light industrial zoning district.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Alexander.
Even closer, Alex. Even closer. I'm getting the signal.
All right.
Good.
My name is Alexander Fisher, and law firm Savo Shaw Gillespie O'Grady and Fisher. I represent the applicant 284 Sunnymead LLC. We are here tonight for an informal concept plan review. The applicant is proposing a 92,280 square foot building consisting of 86,280 square feet of warehouse and 6,000 square feet of office in the I-1 zone, which is a permitted use. We'll discuss later potential adjustments to the office portion of the building relating to parking requirements. The property is a 6.5 acre flag lot that was created by virtue of a subdivision in 2006. I have with me Tom Decker, the project engineer from Van Cleef, and also the property owner, John Demici, is here if you have any questions for him. So with that, I'd like to bring up Mr. Decker. Do you want the exhibits marked in for this or not, because it's just a concept informal?
I mean, he can mark them for purposes, and I don't see unless you feel the need to swear Mr. Decker in as an informal.
No, I don't need to qualify him, so.
The attorney, we may have to swear him.
Again, Tom Decker from Van Cleef Engineering. I have an exhibit up. It's the same plan that was submitted to the board, so you should have copies of it. As, excuse me, as was indicated, this property was subject to a subdivision previously. The lot is, it fronts on Sunnymead Road. Railroad runs along. You can see this off to the, off to the east at an angle. The railroad comes down in this direction. So we're north of the railroad on the eastern side of Sunnymead Road. Lot was subdivided to create this flag lot to the rear of what is in the front is General Tool Building. This flag lot was created with the idea that a 80,000 plus or minus square foot building could be constructed back here. We are currently proposing the warehouse, 6,000 square feet of which would be office, that would be 3,000 square feet on one floor, 3,000 square feet on the other floor. The intent is that this would have two tenants in it. So one tenant would have the upper part, upper office space, the second tenant would have the lower office space. It's accessed through a flagstaff off of Sunnymead, which was created as part of subdivision. It's 50 feet wide. We're proposing a 28-foot wide driveway coming through that flagstaff. That continues to a parking lot in the front of the lot, which has, currently has 23 parking spaces proposed. However, as the board planner, township planner, Dave Maskey, pointed out in his letter, we misread the chart for the amount of parking required for the office. There's a very small number-one footnote that we missed, and that applies only to shopping centers for a reduction in the parking. So our intention is that when we come in for a site plan, we'll modify the office space, reduce it, so we reduce the number of parking spaces required, but also provide additional parking in the parking lot and the detention basin, which we have shown to the west of the parking area. Right now, it's proposed as a surface detention basin. If we need to expand the parking lot, we may be looking at some sort of an underground detention facility or a combination of a below-ground and above-ground facility. The driveway then continues towards the rear, which is where the loading bays would be located. So all of the loading operations would be buffered by the location of the building. Trucks would come in through the driveway, access the rear, and then we have garage bays in the, at the rear of the property. At the time, a site plan will be engaging a traffic engineer who will provide testimony with regards to trips in and out of the facility, as well as the ability for not only the delivery trucks, but also fire equipment and so forth to access the rear. There are a few waivers that we will need, and, well, I guess it's really just one. The buffer?
It's parking lot stall width and aisle width.
Right. And the buffer.
Well, and, you know, I wanted to discuss that.
Okay.
Closer.
When we go, we can go through the review memo from Mr. Maskey, but he noted that in Section, Section 188-106E4 requires a 20-foot wide buffer along property lines abutting residential districts. And the problem with that is that by virtue of the prior subdivision, the board required the location of the lot to be there and also required that once the rear property was developed, that the existing ingress and egress for the front property be removed and it be shared.
Correct.
So you can't do a 20-foot buffer there.
Correct.
So if you want to explain what we have.
Yes. So we have, we have a 50-foot wide flagstaff with a 28-foot wide drive. Part of the, one of the conditions of the original approval was that the access from the existing facility, the driveway currently comes out to Sunnymead, where I'm indicating in the shaded area, that's to be removed, and the connection is, connection from that parking lot to this drive would be relocated to the, along the northern property line. So that would maintain only one driveway out onto Sunnymead Road. It just becomes a common driveway for the two lots. Because it's 50 feet wide and we have a 28-foot wide road in it, that's, or driveway that's centered, we cannot satisfy that 20-foot buffer within that 50-foot flagstaff. So that would be a waiver that we would need for the 20-foot landscape buffer. The property to the north is a current residence, and it is in the residential district, so the buffer does apply. Once we get past the end of the flagstaff and into the flag of the property, we do align the driveway, shift it down, so we do provide that 20-foot buffer adjacent to the driveway by the, by the building. So we are able to accomplish it once we get into the, into the flag portion of the lot, but we just can't comply with that in the flagstaff.
If you want to go through the, well, first, are there any questions for Mr. Decker?
My question is, do you need a 50-foot wide driveway?
No, it's not a 50-foot wide driveway. It's a 50-foot wide portion of the lot itself.
Okay. So that's the easement?
So it's, so it's, that's, it's, it's a portion of, the lot is basically this flagstaff, and then it comes around and then back out. So this whole flagstaff is part of a lot. It's only, it's 50 feet wide. We have a 28-foot wide driveway in the middle. So that gives us, that only gives us 11 feet on either side.
Gotcha.
Okay. We can go through Mr. Maskey's memo. He first goes through the, some of the conditions of the subdivision approval. If we go to number four, providing buffers around the wetlands, I believe that was done by the previous subdivision applicant. The applicant shall provide an access easement on the flag portion of the lot from the rear of the property to the front of the property consisting of 50-foot wide driveway. I believe that was done by the subdivision applicant. Number six, the applicant agrees that if and when a future site plan application comes before the planning board, an environmental impact statement shall be submitted, and the future applicant shall comply with the standards applicable to an airport runway zone. We will comply with both of those. The applicant agrees, and this is what we're discussing, that if and when a future site plan application comes before the planning board, a new common driveway shall be created in the stem of the new lot. That's the flag that he was pointing to before. Once the new driveway is created, the existing access to the existing building off Sunnymead Road shall be closed. So that is planned as part of this application. The applicant shall restrict itself to light industrial use and provide a deed restriction running with the land in the event of any sale of the property. We would comply with that. And the applicant agrees that no future application for the new lot shall request a devariance. There are no devariances being requested for this when the site plan is filed.
What's number, what's number six being with an environmental impact statement and the airport runway? Like, what's that all about?
If you want to explain. Well, we would certainly have to do an environmental impact statement when we come in for a site plan application, as we would with, with any application. We are in the airport zone. It does come onto the property. It's a matter of elevation, the building elevation relative to the runway elevation. We've checked that, and we comply, and we'll be able to provide those proofs.
That's just like a separate report that I thought that they would, the EA?
Has nothing to do with the environmental impact statement.
Okay.
Correct.
Going to the 2012 solar field application, they've been constructed, so three and four are not applicable. Five, I believe the applicant for that, which is the property owner, has installed that four-foot-high chain link fence. And number six, the 37 pine trees, it is our understanding that the, those were not installed yet because they would have to be removed, if they were installed, they would have to be removed at the time that the common driveway on the flag stem was created. And so the applicant received permission from Mr. Ringelheim back in 2012 to delay that until it was completed. However, it will be completed, and I can have the applicant, I can have Mr. Demici confirm that if you'd like. It will be completed as part of this application by him.
I would suggest that, Mr. Fisher, since it's a little difficult to get Mr. Ringelheim to confirm anything anymore right now.
We, well, we, that's true. But I can have.
Is that on the plan somewhere that these, where these trees should be?
No. The trees may be on the plan, but I doubt that was ever confirmed.
If you just want to introduce yourself and discuss.
And again, you're not, you're not on sworn testimony, but.
Just for some background.
First of all, my name is John Damacy. I've been in Hills Road Township over 40 years.
Closer to the mic, please, John.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
That's good. Thank you.
I've been in the township for 40 years. I supplied a lot of jobs here for residents in the, in the township. And when we put the solar system in, it was, gave us the ability to reduce our power costs, which were skyrocketing, and kept us in business. When we put the system in, I had spoke to Bob Regelheim. Unfortunately, Mr. Miegelheim is not here anymore. And Bob and I agreed that putting the trees in would be foolhardy for the fact that the trees would have been in a way where the roots and everything would have been in the tree, and we would have wound up killing them. He said to me, we were supposed to get an agreement. We never had an agreement, but my word is my word. When that, when that road is done and finished, those trees will go in. There's 37, 37, 37 of them, and I will put them in. They will be put in.
I think the question the Chair was asking, Mr. Damacy, was, and I don't recall off the top of my head, we'll have to look. Did you, did you pay for the service? I don't know whether on the plans it was indicated exactly where the pine trees were going to go, and if they can't go where they were supposed to go, because obviously there is no longer, there's now a different driveway, et cetera. I think the issue becomes where we're going to put them. So I would just advise the applicant, and I'll ask Patrick to check with Mr. Maskey, whether or not the plans actually show them, and if not, we'll need to find out as part of the application where to put them.
I have the plans, and the trees are shown on the plans around the, the system. It is, it is right there. It's black and white.
Then I think the issue is going to be where we're going to put them.
Okay. Do you think you're going to change that?
Well, we haven't seen the plan yet.
We haven't seen the plans yet, and obviously the issue's going to be, if we can't put some or all of those trees where they were planned to go for obvious reasons, then the applicant's going to have to come up with an alternative to put the trees in.
Maybe I misunderstood. Did you say they will go in the same spot, or they won't go in the same spot?
Well, they, we have a plan for the solar system. They dedicated areas around the solar system for the trees, basically on the side where the road is. I have that plan, and that was the plan that was approved when we put the solar system in. But in hindsight, maybe they went, they didn't realize that there was a roadway going up the side of the property. We know that the buffer is going to be on the other side of the property for the, for the neighbors, but this is next, right next to the, you know what?
I can shut.
It's okay. I just misunderstood what you said, and so I, I'm clear now. I got it. And we'll make sure on the.
Yeah. If I can, the solar, the solar field is located to the rear of the existing building, so it's back here. So the location of the trees that we're talking about is in this area. So, so the concern was if we, if they put the trees in before that common driveway is in, with construction and so forth, the trees could get damaged. So that's why it was agreed that the trees could be planted at a later date, once the driveway is in. And we may find, when we come in with, with site plans, the board may, you know, wish to work those trees a little bit more.
What was the purpose of the trees? Was it tree replacement? Was it landscaping?
Actually, it was a bit of buffer between my property and the neighbors, basically. That was the intent.
A little bit of a privacy type of thing.
Right. So it may make sense, when we come in for the site plan, when we discuss with the board, it may make sense to move those trees from between the solar panels to the other side of the driveway to provide enhanced buffer to the, to the resident to the north.
So I think the issue's simply going to be, if, if there, if there is an inability to plant in accordance with the approval, then obviously you're going to have to come and show how you're planning and dealing with it.
Right. So there will be trees there.
Are you taking down any trees with this project, or?
There, there will be trees taken down to the rear of the property. We're going to have a, an arborist come in and take a look at them. There are a lot of trees back there that are diseased, dying, and so forth.
So maybe you could roll that into a tree replacement type of plan, you know?
We will have a tree mitigation.
We will have a tree mitigation plan. So we, we will be taking down trees. We will have to do, you know, comply with the township ordinance with regards to tree replacement.
Excuse me, Mr. Decker, if I can just jump in real quick.
Sure.
This will help, you know, you visiting along. Can, on Mr. Maskey's memo, on page 3, where his point, 188, that's 68, all tree parking and loading, the parking and loading on the, in the loading area, is supposed to be provided a buffer? Is that buffer, are you anticipating that buffer to be exist, with the existing tree line there, or are you going to be adding additional trees to there?
We'll, we'll know more when we get into the design, but if we are removing existing trees and we need to put back in a buffer, we'll certainly put back in.
Okay. That also satisfies Bill White's comments about the tree mitigation plan.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
I think we're good.
I just ask you, what, let me ask you, what are you going to be warehousing? Like, is it just general stuff, or?
My, my understanding is that it's warehouse facility for, they're going to lease it out. They're, you know, they're going to get shipments coming in, and then they're going to be parceled out and then shipped out. So it's really, it's not a, it's not a manufacturing or any, or any type of facility like that. My understanding is it's purely goods coming in, goods going, going out.
As for parking, as Mr. Decker addressed before, we understand that 38 parking spaces will be required, not 23. And I believe when we come in for site plan, we'll probably be bringing the office down a bit because it requires eight times as many parking spaces as warehousing. And also adjusting the parking and perhaps adding more spaces and adjusting the drainage to make that happen. So we believe it'll be compliant when we come in for site plan approval. Loading requirements are met. We mentioned the stall and aisle dimension waivers that we'll need. We would hope the board would consider those. They're almost de minimis and in line with other waivers the board has granted before. And for seven additional information, we will be providing a lighting plan, a landscaping plan, including buffer treatments, signage details, tree removal and mitigation plan, and traffic study. And on top of that, also environmental impact statement and analysis of airport runway compliance, airport runway zone compliance. And just moving quickly to Mr. White's memorandum. If we go to number three, we've already, my client has already retained Gary Dean, so, for traffic, so you'll be getting a comprehensive study.
Number, on number two.
Number two, I think that's related to the 37 trees. That's why it's not compliant. So that will be dealt with as part of this, and I think probably better.
In Mr. White's absence, we're sort of.
Yep. Number four, we will be providing a tree preservation plan. Number five, the client recognizes that it is a major development, will require full stormwater management. Mr. Decker?
Yeah, we've, we've already anticipated that in the layout. As I indicated before, we have a small basin up in front that drains towards Sunnymead Road. As a matter of fact, the drainage was anticipated to go in this, in this direction. We also have another basin towards the rear that would discharge towards the, towards the south. Our, our goal is to take the roof drainage and keep that in the basin in the front, especially if it's underground, because roof drainage is clean water. So we want to keep the clean water separated from the pavement, where we want to get the most cleansing out of the stormwater as possible. So we would take all the paved area to the rear basin, so we can maximize cleaning that water up. So we're, we're hoping to keep, keep them separate.
You guys are hooked up to a sanitary sewer now, or?
The sanitary sewer, there's a, a new development going in across the street. They have a sanitary manhole that they recently installed in the middle of Sunnymead Road, just to the north. We will be, we will be tying the proposed building into the grab, into the, the sanitary sewer line.
And number six, the right-of-way dedication from the property frontage, provide a 30-foot right-of-way half width from the center line of the road. We believe this was done as part of the subdivision, but if not, it will be done as part of this application. And of course, you're familiar with the requirement of all the additional agency approvals as well. So, you know, just wanted to take the, see if the board had any recommendations before we come in for potential modifications, before we come in for site plan approval. And I think already the, the, looking at the trees was a good recommendation, where to perhaps move them. If there's anything else, we'd love to hear from you.
Are there any consideration on a, on a building this size? Obviously, that's, that's warehousing goods as far as a secondary, you know, of course, I don't know if you talked to any of the fire departments, a secondary entrance for emergency vehicles or water supply in the back?
We, we have not had those discussions, but we will with the fire marshal.
I don't know. I'm assuming there's water at the street, right? Is there a hydrant anywhere nearby, or have to be had back there?
Do you know, Tom, if there's a hydrant?
I don't, I don't know about, about a hydrant. I do know that there is public water within Sunnymead, so we'll certainly work with the...
Yeah, the water is all over the neighborhood.
Do you know where the nearest fire hydrant is?
It's not on Sunnymead Road, I can say that.
Okay.
I didn't remember seeing one on Sunnymead Road.
Yeah, we'll, we'll.
That's a good point.
You know, if, if we're required to put in a fire hydrant, we'll certainly put in a fire hydrant.
I would, I would think a structure that size would warrant. If, you know, I'm not the fire marshal, but I would, I put a building up much smaller than this, and I have to put a fire hydrant in my building.
Certainly will comply.
All right. Anything else?
I would think, right.
Right? From the environmental aspect or anything like that?
No, I mean, they're going to do an EA, and I mean, you talked about the trees and the sanitary sewers and all the stuff.
Yeah. The only other thing I can think of from an environmental standpoint is the wetlands are located in the southwest corner of the exist, where the, the improvement. are located in the southwest corner of the, exist, where the improvements already are. There, there was an off-site area back here that was identified, but we're going to go through and get a, an updated LOI because the one that we had previously has expired.
And you believe it's reduced from that previous?
Yeah, we, we believe that that wetland has been reduced from, naturally reduced from the original LOI.
That was back in 2006?
Yeah.
Yeah, you got to do another one anyway.
Yeah, we have to do another one, so we'll, they're going to engage the environmental consultant.
Excuse me, Tom, one additional question.
Sure.
In the front, you're anticipating for a waiver of the buffer by the dwelling up front, the first half portion of that driveway. Is there a natural buffer on the other property line that can act as a possible buffer or you anticipate adding anything that would help mitigate anything coming from this property?
So you're asking, on, on the adjacent property to the north, is there any natural buffer there?
Correct.
No?
Please speak in the microphone. Thank you.
Not, basically, there's not very many trees next to the property. We have a view right to their house. There was a couple of trees that they, that came down from the last hurricane and they have not been replaced.
But I believe there was a recommendation to put the trees that need to go in, at least 37 trees plus whatever mitigation would need to be done in between the property line and the, the road, right?
Yes, yeah. Although, even though we don't have the 20-foot-wide buffer, we'll, we'll certainly provide whatever buffer plantings we can in there to provide some screening to break that up.
One question. I know it's mentioned in Mr. Maskey's memo that you probably need to provide some kind of a lighting plan.
Yes.
So I'm just curious if you have any initial idea how that will be?
Not, not really. It'll certainly comply with the township ordinance. We would have regular part, you know, regular lighting for the parking lot in the front. We'd have to take a look. We may have, you know, look at the ordinance, we may have to put in a, a couple of lights along the, the drive coming in. They would have shields on the residential side so that it would be shielded from, from, you know, spilling over onto the adjacent property. The back of the, the building, there'll probably be, most likely, building-mounted lights on the building shining down into the loading areas, and that area backs up against the railroad to the south, so we, or to the, to the east, so we don't have any residents over there or anything like that. But again, it'll be designed so that we meet the township requirement for minimum illumination and also so that we don't have spilling into adjacent properties.
And do, would you expect them to only be in use during the day hours, like business hours or nighttime or?
I'm not sure exactly what...
I'm not sure what...
What their hours intend to be yet. So I'm going to have to hold off on that too.
That was my follow-up, if this was going to be a, a 24/7 operation, obviously the, the noise and the lights, because just to the north, there is a residential dwelling and all those homes being built across the street that are going to be now thrust in the middle of a...
Yeah, no, that's the...
A warehouse across the street that they weren't aware of. I think that would be, I don't know if they have tenants yet that they plan on leasing to, find out if it is going to be a non-normal business hour operation that they would address noise and lighting to keep the neighbors happy.
No, I think those are good points and we can, that's, that's one of the reasons why we're here, so we can, we can advise those, that those are going to be concerns of the board.
There's no restriction, there's no restriction in the IZ as far as any hours of operation, right?
No, but we can obviously have that conversation and I would suspect, depending on when the applicant comes in and who may be across the street, might have some voices. We'll get some voices.
Yeah, okay. That would, yeah, obviously I would, I know there's one immediately there and then there are four or so new ones prospect coming up across the way. The building's going, you say 35 feet, you're right, the max, you plan on staying at that, that height for the building?
That's our...
That's your intent?
At, at this point, we won't exceed any, you know, we won't exceed the, we won't be looking for a height variance at all. And we're also, because of the height, we also have to keep in mind the airport.
The airport, right?
Hazard area, so we can't go. And we, we took a look, even the 35 feet, we're, we're well below where we can be.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, you have to take into effect the airport and the lights too, so it doesn't conflict with the airport, especially if something coming in at night.
I'm sorry.
I was just saying, you have, having your light...
I said the airport with the lights on the building, anything coming in at night in the airport, so it doesn't conflict and confuse them.
Yep, no, we'll have to, we'll certainly have to take a look at that.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm sorry, Mr. Fisher, Mr. Decker, I believe it was mentioned to our department that you were considering of possibly reducing the office space in, in the building?
Yes.
At one point? Could you please elaborate on that, please?
The, the reduction in the office space would be in concert with the parking requirement. So we may not have 6,000 square feet, which would be 3,000 square feet on each floor. That might be reduced to 2,000 square feet on each floor. So we may go to 4,000 square feet total, which I think reduces our number of parking spaces by maybe about six. So we would...
So your goal is to match your parking spaces to your...
Exactly. We're not going to be looking for any relief. It's, it's going to be a balancing act between, you know, the amount of office space we have and the amount of parking.
You have the capability to exceed the 23, depending. You can build more than a 23.
We can build more than a 23. It just becomes a matter of how we handle the stormwater management there, whether we go underground or we keep it as a surface base. So that's, that's the only, the only issue.
Is there a requirement as far as if, because it's a warehouse, how many parking spaces are required if it's for a warehouse or just office space?
Yeah, it's, it's one space, it's one space per 5,000 square feet.
On the warehouse?
For the warehouse, for the office, it's one space per 300 square feet.
Okay.
So...
Actually, just correcting addition, if you're anticipating loading base too, there'll be additional spaces for the loading base, which does increase your parking overall.
Right, okay. Thanks.
Do you have the ordinance reference on that so we can make sure we get it?
I'm sure Mr. Maskey could provide it.
Any, any other comments or questions? All right, well, thank you for your time, this formal concept review this evening and hopefully we'll be back in the near future with a compliance site plan application.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
All right. Correspondence, there is none. We need to talk about our next meetings. We have the business meeting on the 27th, which we still need to have, correct? Oh, yes. We have a full agenda for the board's edification. The township committee felt the desperate need Tuesday night to do a lot of work, of which there are three ordinances they introduced from first reading that have an impact on the board. One is the mixed-use development ordinance related to Silsboro 206 Associates. The other is the extended care on GA District, and the third is the commercial vehicle ordinance. There may also be, the intent is for a fourth ordinance for consideration by the board, another one of our affordable housing issues. And there may be a fifth, we'll see what happens. But there is a absolute need for the July 27th meeting unless you all feel the desperate need to break a tradition, which has gone on as long as I've been the planning board attorney for 17 years, of no meetings in August.
I think the 27th is fine.
That's right. I'm just, I know you know how, I was talking, we need a quorum, folks.
Yes. Is anyone here that's not going to be available for the 27th?
I'm, I'm not going to be available.
Okay.
I'll be there.
All right, we'll reach out for the missing, but in order, in order for those three ordinances that we just discussed to be potentially adopted, no, you need, you need five.
You need five.
To be potentially adopted by the township committee at its August 8th meeting, we need the approvals.
What was the first one for?
The one, the second, if you recall, the second affordable housing, Hillsboro 206 Associates.
Across the street.
Across the street with no neighbors.
With no neighbors. The mixed use, suppose it makes...
Mixed use, well, it is. It's a proposed mixed use of residential and commercial, including residential over commercial.
Right.
That's up for second reading on the 8th, and the other two are also up for second reading on the 8th. So if you want the committee to act on them, they have to be reviewed by you all before.
Okay.
And there is another, as I said, there's another application, another developer, at least one, maybe two, in the pipeline relative to affordable housing.
So if we don't do it on the 27th, we'd have to have a meeting on the 3rd.
To get it done by the time that you'd want to have it, yes.
I'm not so sure that anyone particularly feels the desperate to break the...
No, 27th is fine.
To break the tradition.
The tradition.
This board is not to meet in August.
If we don't have to.
So you've never, you've never had to so far, Mr. Chairman, at least since I've been board attorney in 17 years.
Far be it from meaning to break tradition, if I don't have to. Okay, so then after that would be September 7th for the next...
7th, it looks like we do have applica, at least right now, it looks like we have applications.
Okay.
And possibly ordinances again.
Possibly. Progress never stops. All right, so we'll have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned. 816.